On the agenda is our water bond sale terms and procedures.
We're gonna do the pledge, or?
Okay.
I think. Alright, we're good. We already got it.
Go ahead, Joey, you're up.
We'll send allegiance.
If you guys don't know, this is Joey Howard, W N Financial. Helped us out with the super bond sale a few years ago, and a diesel generator.
I've been the city's financial advisor fifteen years, something like that, quite a long time. So that's how I ended up working with you all as well. So today, the goal is going to be to pass a resolution that authorizes the sale of your bonds. Before we get there, I want to go through several matters on the sale with you, because this will be the only time I see you before the sale. And I want to make sure you understand the process and that everything goes extremely smooth on the date of sale. The date of sale is, as you know, even though you are authorized to do everything as far as the water system, the actual sale of the bonds is required to go through the city. So we do that concurrent with the city's meeting, which is on April 16th. Actually, I'll just go ahead and start passing things out. This is the time schedule. And you are going to need to have a special meeting on the date of the sale, which is April, like I said, April 16th, to be concurrent. To be concurrent with the city's council meeting. And in the past, when we've done these same-date meetings, the best situation is to have your meeting just right before the city's. But in any event, it shouldn't be before four o'clock. Basically, on the date of sale in the morning, at 10:00 in the morning, we're going to be taking bids through an internet site. I'm telling you a lot of details in case anyone wants to watch. You can go to Abe's office.
It's like an easy option.
And watch the bids come in. But then, once the bids come in, we adjust the issue size, we adjust the structure, we let the winning bidder know that they've been selected. Bond Council has to complete all of the documents. And so the soonest that I think we would be ready to go and have you act on it would be around four o'clock. But if you can wait until closer to the council time, that would be better. And I don't have the exact time, but I'm pretty sure that their meeting is at seven o'clock.
That's one day after our regular April meeting day. Even if we wanted to schedule our April meeting for that Tuesday at like 4:00 P. M. to accommodate this thing, I think we'd probably get it. That'd be a...
She's saying later in the...
Later in the day, the better.
So we start our meeting at four?
Four, even five. And I... We have to finish before council. But later's better, but we could be done before the council meeting.
Five would probably be alright. We just may have to...
Hustle.
Yeah, speed up through the normal stuff.
That's not new.
I just want to throw that out there.
What will we do to get you on the board that?
There's, I'm not sure if it's one resolution or two, but it'll be a document that authorizes the sale based on how bids came in and selecting the underwriter. And then, as part of that, you're delegated with all the responsibilities of the city for managing the ongoing finances of the bond issue.
Are we approving the...
We might have our fiscal... We might have that budget on there, depending on how today goes.
So maybe have it at four o'clock.
We don't have to have a budget on there, but typically we do.
I don't have a problem with that, but I wouldn't say we don't have it at four. Just give ourselves enough time.
Sure. Would four be acceptable, Joey?
I don't think so. I mean, if we're running a little bit late, you'll just have to move our action till to the end of your meeting.
Yeah, okay. But we can just have that item be last.
Yeah.
And then I could be, have my phone, Joey, call me or something.
I can guarantee to you that I will not make it to that meeting. I just won't have enough time between the sale, getting the sale things together and getting here. But I know Bond Council is going to want to be here, so I'll need to coordinate with them.
We try it forward and have that more towards about five o'clock when it's actually happening.
So I'm marking down four o'clock for the start of your meeting. Okay. The next item is the, what the numbers look like as of today. I watched Abe online giving you an incredibly good presentation on the rating agency results. And that, I do want to congratulate everyone. The A-minus rating was the best I think you possibly could have gotten. And to have gotten that, you had to have done a very good presentation. So you can thank Heath and Abe for that. Basically, what it's my understanding has not been presented to you is that on top of the rating, we're acquiring municipal bond insurance, which will take your A-minus rating to a double-A rating. It's not going to save you a ton of money, because you did get a fairly good rating, but it should save about 10 basis points. And in addition to that, by purchasing insurance, you won't have to establish what's called a reserve fund. So normally, on revenue bonds of this type, you have to fund a reserve fund, which is equal to maximum annual debt service. And for discussion purposes, we're gonna say that's around $600,000. Instead of funding that, the insurance company offers an insured reserve. I'm gonna give you the cost on that. And it was only $14,472. That's based on my estimated interest rates. That might, that might change a little bit, but not too much.
Before we move along, just so in case anybody listening at home, assuming people do, don't know what it is, how much is 10 basis points in terms of percentage?
Oh, as a percent, it's .1%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if you look at the numbers, I'm not gonna take you through all of these, just a few of them real quick, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. So on page one is the estimated cost of issuance. Towards the middle of the page is the bond insurance figures. So to insure your bond, it shouldn't get you the double-A minus rating. Actually, I think I misspoke, just a second. Was it double, do you have the official statements at double-A?
Not from me, I don't.
I think it's double-A. Yes, okay. Thank you. Anyway, the, the cost of the insurance itself is the $25,969.34. That's, it's based on 16.3 basis points of principal and interest. And again, I'm basing things on estimated interest costs. I'm hoping that my interest rates I'm using are high. So this might be a little bit on the high side.
That's on total principal and interest paid back for the life of the bonds.
Correct.
That's why it's...
And then, the, the debt service policy was what I had just mentioned, which was to insure your reserve instead of you having to fund a reserve.
So this isn't per year, this is...
One time upfront.
That's correct.
That's a small amount.
So those are the costs of issuance. On page two, you'll notice that towards the bottom, I've carried over those costs of issuance. In addition to that, at the, towards the top of the page, there'll be underwriter's discount, which is another cost of issuance, but I treat it a little bit different, because the, that big fee is deducted from the proceeds. You never see it. The other costs you pay later. You're doing a 10 million, estimated $10 million issue to be bank-qualified, which I know Abe explained to you a long time ago. Oh, actually, it wasn't that long ago, I think you had several discussions about it. So the, having bank-qualified bonds gives a tax benefit to banks who buy bonds that issuers that issue no more than $10 million dollars in any year. It's part of the tax code, the IRS tax code. And Bond Council has determined that the $10 million can't be more than the face value, 10 million, but it also can't be more than items one and two, if you look at this sheet. So if a bidder bids a premium, which is complicated, we can talk about it if you need to, but if a bidder bids a premium where they pay you extra dollars, that one and two can't exceed 10 million. So theoretically, depending on where bids come in, we could end up with an issue size that's smaller than 10 million, but you would still have proceeds that equal around, around 10 million, basically, before payment of the other costs of issuance. I thought I'd mention that, so when I show up, well, when your numbers show up, if your issue size is less than 10 million, that's the reason. Proceeds will be the same, but the issue size might be smaller. The page three shows the estimated debt service for the $10 million issue based on estimated interest rates. I'm hoping on high, but we, of course, don't know until bids come in. Oh, there haven't been any comparable sales like this in Missouri the whole entire year. So for me, I'm taking a conservative guess of where I think rates are going to come in, but there's nothing I can point to and say, oh, it should be kind of like this. I just have to look at the market, use some general knowledge that I have.
And when you say sales like this, you mean a bank certified $10 million bond? Or is it a rating on that?
A revenue bond. Oh, utility revenue bond.
Okay.
In Missouri, there's, there's very few utility revenue bonds in Missouri at all, because a lot of them are done through the state revolving fund. So it isn't like a, even in, in, at any point in time, I may not see a lot of these issues, but... And in Missouri, the bonds are doubly tax exempt from both federal and state taxation. So I can't necessarily go to another state like Illinois and look for something similar, because Illinois, they're not double tax exempt.
A leasehold, a leasehold bond wouldn't be...
A leasehold bond would typically have higher interest rates.
Okay.
And...
I mean, it's a whole different thing.
Exactly. Page four, this gets into a lot of detailed math. So I'm gonna go through this really quick unless you want to go through a lot of detailed math. But there's a call, it's called interest rate. That's what we traditionally call the coupon rate on the bonds, although there's no physical coupons nowadays. The yield is, is the yield where if you were purchasing the bonds, it would be the rate of return that you would want. And then the, the price is, for each maturity, is the price where the underwriter would sell the bonds to the public. And if you take that whole stream of payments, at the bottom of the page, it shows that net original issued discount at minus 2,047. It, it could be a premium, though, and that's why I'm saying if that number is a premium, then the issue size goes down. Page five. And, and all this, when, on the day after the sale, since I won't be here to explain to you, Abe's going to be able to tell you all, every single detail about this you want to know.
I'll do my best.
Page five shows your outstanding issue. This is the issue that was sold to the state revolving fund. And page six is the combined debt service. And if you remember, there was a lot of discussions on how you could issue the new, the new issue with the outstanding issue. You had to comply with various bond covenants relating to parity bonds. And those tests that are in the ordinance are, all the little bit of math I'm showing at the bottom of the page. So that was a proof that we were using just to make sure that you could issue parity bonds without having to have all of your future planned rate increases in effect. And that's all I have to tell you on the map. I mean, it's a lot. I don't know if you have any questions. If not, I'm gonna move on to the, the resolution. The resolution has attachments, which is the notice of bond sale and the official statement. I'm sure you've read all the hundreds of pages of documents we provided. Anyway, the official statement is the document that was used in conjunction with getting you a rating, and it's used for purposes of selling the bonds to the original underwriter, and then the underwriter to the subsequent investors. The other attachment is the notice of sale, which I do want to talk about a little bit. The notice of sale talks about the date and time of sale. And the date, the date, well, the time of the sale is the 10:00 bid opening to be acted upon by, by the city. And it says here, seven o'clock. It confirms the time I thought it was. You'll also notice that throughout the notice of sale, it says 10 million. It's got an asterisk, "subject to change." The subject to change is what I was talking about. If you get a premium, that size goes down. The other thing is that we're allowed to, on the date of the sale after bids come in, to modify each maturity of bonds. So right now, we have level debt service, basically, well, we don't start the payments until 2022, but beginning in the year 2022 till maturity, it's basically level debt, equal payments of principal and interest, more or less, every year. So when the bids come in, Abe and I will work to reestablish a debt service schedule that gets you back to that structure, equal payments of principal and interest. This talks about the conditions for awarding the bonds. The bidder has to give you a good faith deposit of 200,000 the day of the sale. It's like earnest money. Talks about the rating and legal opinion. But the other thing that I wanted to mention to you is that it talks about the terms of the bids, the conditions that you would, that you would be willing to accept. And I don't know if you have the notice in front of you, but it's on page three. So basically, the ma, the major terms that I've set forth is that no interest rate can exceed 5%. The purchase price can't be more than 105%. And the purchase price bid can't be less than 99%. Each maturity of bonds has to be not less than 97%. So all those terms and conditions in there are basically to prevent getting ridiculous bids, like somebody bidding a half a percent on the 29th year. And then you would never, ever, depending on what the market is, you would never, ever be able to refund again. You'd just be stuck with, you know, .5% forever. And, but all the other maturities would have like much higher interest rates. So all of those are just to help maintain a reasonable bid. And then on top of that, as I said, we can adjust principal amounts. And I think that's all I have, unless you have questions. Otherwise, you can proceed to approve the resolution.
I, I had some, just kind of big-picture questions, which I'm sure is all in here, but again, I just want to ask on behalf of the right here. And some of these questions may not be phrased correctly, but I'm just trying to phrase it in the way that I would if I were to take out a mortgage on my house. So what's the collateral of this bond?
There is no collateral, per se. There's not like a mortgage on anything like you have on a lease. Basically, there's a pledge of the revenues, net revenues of the system.
Okay. And that pledge is unbreakable?
Yes. You're required to have $1.25 for every $1 of debt service, both on the old issue and the new issue. You're required to maintain rates, user rates, that produce that much revenue each year. And if you don't produce that much each year, it's a reportable event on the municipal securities. We'll make in Board's website that you had a technical default, and the bondholders can compel you to comply with that covenant.
Okay. And that, Abe?
As a point, that's $1.25 of net revenue. So revenues minus operating expenses. It's not $1.25 of revenue, it's...
I'm sorry, yes.
Net revenues, revenues minus expenses roughly equals net revenue.
Okay, so essentially, there's no mechanism where we don't pay, and if we don't, we'll be compelled to.
Correct.
Okay. And can we pay it off early?
Because we were required to do a competitive sale. I have a call provision that's in, I believe, is it, it's nine years. Hold on. It might be eight, but... That's on the notice of sale, it's on page two. The bond's maturing on and after January 1st, 2008 can be called at your option beginning on January 1st, 2027.
Okay.
So there's several years when you can't call them, because you have to do a competitive sale. But by virtue of the city's charter, we had to take a call date that's market acceptable, so to speak.
And that would essentially protect the person who buys the bond?
Correct. That they know that their bonds aren't going to be called for a certain amount of years.
Okay. Cool. That's a, that's all I got. Thank you.
If payment's not made, as you were saying, does that affect the rating? Will our rating go down? Will our rating...
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you missed a payment, your rating would... It wouldn't go to like a B double-A. It would be lower to default territory, which is like a D, I believe, a C, a D. And then ultimately, if you don't correct it, your rating's withdrawn. But apart from the bondholders you have right now, you, you have a contract right now also with the state. So I can, trust me, the state's going to come after you apart from the new bondholders.
And we gotta make our payments.
Abe, to, to expand upon that, that'll, the default would not only impact our ability to do business, but it would have ripple effects on the city itself, right?
It would not help the city any. I'm not sure I want to make that... It would not cast them in a favorable light, obviously. I'm not sure that would, I'm not sure that contagion would spread over to them necessarily, but it could.
I would agree with that. I, I would totally agree. I've never been in a situation where that has occurred, so...
We don't intend for it to happen here.
We don't really want to even speculate about it.
That's not our warning.
Yeah, let's not be the worst.
When will the funds become available to us?
Our closing date, it's on your calendar, is on April 25th.
And the proceeds will come in there, retire me, retire me to our bank, F and M. We'll really start paying bills.
And we don't start paying this off until 2022?
No, there'll be interest payments, but not principal payments.
Oh, interest payments.
And we did that to give you time to build up your... In addition to the parity test, there's that 1.25 debt coverage test, that $1.25 for each dollar of debt service. So to get to that and maintain that, we wanted a few years to go by interest only so that you have time to set your new user charges.
So the items we're asking them to approve are the resolution?
That's it, because that approves everything else.
That, that closes notice of sale and everything that we need to get done today?
So it's right after Schedule A? Would be at page resolution? Of the whole document? Page 14 of the whole packet?
I will make the motion to accept the resolution.
Just a second. Also, all those in favor?
Also, I want to say the, the special meeting that we were talking about doing on April 16th, before we had, we need to prompt vote on that, make sure that's...
I guess we'll call that our, our regular meeting?
Yeah.
To set the regular April meeting?
Basically, move the regular April meeting from the 15th to five, to the 16th to four.
Do we hear a motion to move the regular meeting?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Give us two reminders on that, so... Days ahead of time.
Congratulations, guys, we just spent a lot of money.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. I know when you were talking about looking in your crystal ball, when we were discussing this initially, I think it turned out pretty well for us all in all, compared to what people were prognosticating.
I just want, I just want to thank James and thank Joey again for all her help. She's been involved in this project since before the beginning, honestly. Our ratings called in as well as it did, largely to her, heading us coach and prepare her ahead of time. And, you know, she's been a tremendous asset for this transaction and all the other ones that we've had the chance to use her with on.
They are a part relatively easy.
Cool. Very good.
It is.
Okay. So approval of bond sale documents is taken care of. Go on to the budget workshop.
Abe's got a few handouts, instead of using overhead. He's got a handout of hard topics of almost everything. It's got a little sub-agenda.
Do you all have any, and I realize that I'm late anyway. Do you all have any things that you can give attorney and put on, on the rest of stuff?
I don't think so.
I apologize, I double-scheduled. I stepped out of another meeting to come down.
Really destroyed your...
Right, well, I presume, I presume that's which one I'd be here for, in case there were any legal questions. But, I mean, if there's anything else you all would need me to look at on the budget, I'll stick around for a little bit, but...
Not necessarily.
I don't think so.
They're not making any decisions, they're just a workshop.
All right. Sorry for being late, guys.
You check out that chain though?
What's that?
You check out that chain though?
I need to put a, a better chain on it, but other than that, because the chain's on there, it's not half dull. But let me put a sharp chain on it, it's ready to go.
All right, cool.
Okay.
Thanks, James.
He, do you mind if I...
Yeah. A long...
Do you guys have your little talking, talking points of agenda?
Yes. So it could be Phil or James.
Well, yeah, I put that around, so I don't... Confuse anybody for the viewing. All right, guys, we've got plenty to do today. There is no bad question. Phil, you know, I'm way down the leads on this stuff, so feel free to stop me and pull me back up to 30,000 feet at any time. So I tried to put together a little, kind of the, the four things I'd like to accomplish in our, in our workshop. First thing, one is go over the budget assumptions, budgeting process, some of the results. Second thing is go over the purchase power, costs. That's kind of a significant line item. I actually printed off that curriculum with me in my office. Of course, a big budget line item that involves several moving pieces, so we can talk about that. Heath is gonna walk us through the capital projects, some of the reallocation, repartization, stuff of that. Then we can talk about the overall direction of rates and that kind of thing. So that's kind of the areas I'd like to cover. Then, of course, item five and eight, anything else you guys want to talk about? I think after we, after we cover these four, we will have to possibly exhausted our, our budgeting appetite in sitting. So thing one to launch right in, of course, we have our budget packed it. You guys might have your budget packed that I handed you last time. This should say draft on, of course, it does not, but just to walk through what you're seeing here. So in page one is a summary of all of our utility funds, revenues, expenses, coming up with cash contribution at the bottom. And cash contribution is a fancy way of saying, you know, will our bank account increase or decrease over the year? This looks at our revenues. We pay out certain expenses, or accounts have a term for expenses, and includes things like depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. So we have that back. We do subtract capital expenditures, which are an expense, or expenditure, it's money we pay out, it's just more accounting wonkiness. And then debt principal. We have interest expense as an operating expense, and we have debt principal as a different line item. Comes up with cash, cash contribution. Where does the reserve money come in? It'd be cash contribution, that's cash. What we don't show here would be a beginning reserve and cash contribution ending reserve. Okay. So cash, what I call contribution, in the case of storm waters, actually a, you know, cash deficit either adds to or subtracts from reserves. Next page back, slightly, the numbers get smaller if there's a lot more of them. This shows budget over budget, fiscal year 18, 19, the one where... This shows budget over budget, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, the one we're currently working in right now, compared to the nineteen twenty proposed budget for each fund as well as a company-wide total. So we can kind of see the bigger picture trends and what's changing budget over budget. Then we go into funds.
Like a whole less cash contribution?
Yes, you do, for electric. Yep. Driven by a lower.
Everything.
Yeah. Electric specifically would be a lower cost by lower net income, at the same time, we had higher capital expenditures, the two kind of inspire their journey to provide reduced cash contribution.
Hey, real quick, before we go any further. Because this is a thirty thousand foot question, what's your normal bottom line variance, or what's an acceptable range, or what's a range that you experience?
As close as possible, it's funny.
Well, yeah.
It's funny you mention that, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly, but for the water fund, we love that specifically, for the bond rating. And over the last three fiscal years plus year-to-date, we were within three percent revenue and expense in total over those three years.
So a six percentage point swing, or?
It was three percent high on both revenue and three percent high on expense, I think net income was within, the two of those shook out to be within ten or twenty percent net income.
Oh, but that utility has fewer, has potential for less variation, because you know, you're not buying.
Well, no, yeah, our, water fund's different than electric, because water, it's a, our expense to treat to getting a thousand gallons of water is like a dollar twenty-five or something.
That's gonna remain somewhat costly.
Yeah, whereas electric, you know, our cost to get sold there is much higher, so we're such a larger volatility, a larger volatility.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. The rest of the packet, budget pack honestly gets into more fund-by-fund specifics, so we then have a summary page for electric. Then we get the way small numbers, way much detail, we have department-by-department, of course, we have revenues, department-by-department expenses for electric, water, sewer, storm water. And very end we have the capital spending budget, which Heath will get into more detail later on. So I want to kind of, I want to kind of walk through the budget packet though, because this will be, the final one you get will look exactly like this, it'll just reflect any modifications that we're instructed to make. That's the budget packet, I want to talk about the assumptions I made about revenues for each of the funds when I built this thing. So I use a revenue model, what I call a revenue model, based on trailing twelve months' actual revenues for each fund, which are then increased by a proposed rate increases. And as we said right now, this budget reflects no change in electric rates, it reflects the three and a half percent water increase to take effect July first, and the seven, I say three and a half, and seven point three percent to take effect January first of two thousand twenty. Of course, allocated proportion rates over the year. Sewer fund at this time reflects no rate changes, so each fund, I look, I go through the month-end sales reports, and it's a real exercise, and deep poking, as you can imagine, because we're talking customer charges, usage charges, demand charges for each, each rate class for each one of the years, so it's a big spreadsheet of small numbers. That I have some edit checks, make sure I have my numbers in there accurately. I'm making the assumption that kilowatt-hour sales, things like that, kilowatt-month of demand are flat for electric, so basically, flat usage, flat revenue in electric. Made the assumption that gallons and water fund will be consistent except for public water supply number one is gone as a customer, so they're coming out of there. And then the rate changes I talked about with water, the ones we've talked about consistently, with the water increases and the flat sewer rates.
Will we have a month or two of them?
We're not assuming so, but.
Okay, this is assuming no sales to them?
Not one gallon.
In the next.
Yeah, but the, the valves get shut off on June thirty. Trying to be conservative there, this does build in some of the increased revenues that are, that are big industrial customers, so that is modeled in here at their incentivized rates.
And that, does that change at all?
Those sunset partial issue, this does not build into sunsetting that, so it's a little conservative in that context.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't start till October of.
Okay, I knew they didn't start at the beginning of the year with it, so I didn't know when that rolled in. So that's another thing that we can, will help us beat budget eventually.
Buy a little bit.
Just for, just for water.
Single-digit percentage variance. So that's how I build revenues, of course, budgets, revenues, and expenses, and capital stuff, that's my, that's the approach we've taken for revenues the entire time I've been here and probably before that time.
Is that mine with industry practice?
It's the best I know how to do, honestly, it's, it's a seasonally variant, or seasonal variances in weather and stuff are reflected in that, because like, I go month-by-month, you know, July looks a lot different than November and April, for example, so that's. You'll see the revenues, they probably vary in the electric fund by twenty-five percent, peak, peak drop.
So you're saying it's easier to do this than closing up farmers on your neck and trying to predict the weather?
Yeah, check the sign of the moon and see what the groundhogs have been and all that stuff, yeah, I try to just use, use actual numbers, I can't predict a polar vortex or anything like that.
It's a lot closer than our method from a decade or two ago, where we just send the same amount every month.
Yeah, we have better.
Coming in low this year, though.
What's that now?
Looks like we're coming in low.
Yeah.
Compared to budget this year, so that'll be reflected in this next year's budget.
We should have come in higher, if weather patterns revert.
Or if it's the same, then we'll.
Just we'd be right on target.
Yeah.
We have good software, you know, our, the financial accounting software we have has all this data available, you know, kilowatt-hours, you know, unit sales, gallons, kilowatt-hours by customer class, dollars by customer class, so it's. That month-end sales report that I referred to, I have to control that, because it's about two hundred pages long to jump to the right page.
And did you get with the people that are buying the power on the open market that you're coming for us? Try to predict what the coming year's gonna be, I mean, I know that, I keep saying flat, but then every, every month we say higher than projected costs, so.
I did, I told them when I was using month-by-month for my per-megawatt-hour costs, and also.
So you just double check it?
Yep, and it's called FTRARR, Financial Transmission Rate, Auction Revenue Rate, it's basically the toll on the transmission grid that we should receive a fractional portion of. And they're assuming zero value to that this year, that number has sadly come down every year of the self-managed plan, so that's, that's providing about half of our increase in purchase power cost, or half the increase in operating expenses in electric fund. So that's revenues, take a break, sip of coffee.
That is gonna take it over Heath.
I wish I could transition, because I, I'm not excited to look at or listen to. Expense assumptions, so we bring in some money, that's revenues, we pay out a lot of money, that's expenses. We met with, when I say we, me and Heath and Chrissy and Matt, Bunzlinger and Matt, with all the department supervisors a few weeks ago to review fiscal yearly actual. I take, I look at, I try to triangulate the expense it takes to run their department, we look at fiscal year-to-date actual, I annualize that, so divide by seven, take it times twelve. We look at their fiscal year nineteen annual budget, and we look at the fiscal year eighteen actual results, so I try to take those three points, kind of like a GPS satellite, and triangulate what they need to run their department effectively next year. I assumed one point five five percent inflation, that's the ten, the ten-year average Department of Labor inflation number, one point five five, about as good, close as I can get on that. For expense items, unless they're specifically allocated otherwise, if there's, for example, a new hire starting in one department, they'll need all-new gear and boots and uniform and all that kind of stuff. Or, for example, in the, in the water treatment department, we like the carbon cost and stuff like that for the GAC system. We assume a three percent increase in wages for the current union memorandum of understanding, that memorandum expires in December, so half, halfway through the fiscal year, at the end of this calendar year, I don't know what their, their percentage is at this time, so I use that one.
What was that?
The inflation factor on wages, three percent, which is the current, the current union memo rate, which will cover half of this fiscal year, I don't know what the new rate's gonna be, we negotiated vigorous negotiations between Mr. Lohnbaum and IV, IV David Rowan, or number two. Total, I was gonna point out, total wages increased about five percent, if you, if total wages in this budget compared to last year, due to that inflation factor I just talked about, as long as we had some headcount, that we, this budget reflects an operator to handle the GAC system. We had some headcount in the water distribution crew, the sewer collection crew, kind of succession-related things there, and just getting fully staffed and properly staffed. Then I want to point out that administrative wages, so people, me and he, that whole group of people, that, those dollars decreased about two percent, consolidation we've had after some retirements. Then expense assumptions, purchase power, purchase power costs is for a big one, that is based on our current actual per-megawatt-hour costs, based on the actual megawatt-hours brought to town by month, that one is seasonally allocated also. Actual MISO prices, actual price-stay expenses, based on a trailing twelve-month average with a little bit of inflation, and our consultant, power supply consultants, expectations about financial transmission rate, auction revenue rates.
I read somewhere, I read, Perry State.
Yep.
Did I read that right, that we're not gonna get the benefit that we got when we first came online with Perry State from here on out?
I'm not sure what that article's referring to, there's been a lot of, a lot of commentary.
What I'm saying is, when we start self-managing, right, we reap the benefit of that Perry State, but I read where it's gonna diminish over time, is that?
I'm not familiar with that, I, I mean, we're locked into Perry State proliferation for the long haul, I mean, my budget and everything that operationally that I expect we're gonna do is continue to sell Perry State power, the offset will be by the MISO marketplace. Perry State in the big picture would be affected by any legislation about coal or, you know, clean air or anything like that, being a coal burning plant, are you worried of anything, Heath?
No, I'm not.
Was that article that you read talking about the decline in overall production over the, over the course of the plan and the whole?
No, it had nothing to do with the production, it was the benefit that we got when we first went online with Perry State. But that would go to diminish over time, right, because of the budget the previous year. It was, it was a benefit to, to the current budget that we keep online with Perry State.
Perry State's been online about five and a half years now. And it's been pretty consistent as far as.
Has it?
For about three years, it was kind of stop and go. I was gonna say, it started at seven percent now.
Start looking at eighteen-month cycle now, so that ought to bring it up a little bit more too, that not worse.
Yeah, it's, just today I looked at that, the per-megawatt-hour costs have been in a pretty tight range of sixty-five to sixty-nine dollars per megawatt-hour for three and a half years now, so it's been pretty consistent. So I, I don't perceive a decrease, I don't, I expect there to be a decrease or in productivity of Perry State or anything.
I mean, that's not what they're managing for us anyway, right, they're buying the rest of the, we, through the, through the self-managed program.
Perry State honestly operates like a hedge, as a hedge, it's all generated and sold, and we get a weekly deposit in our checking account from Majma. It's, so it's out there generating, like just today I got an invoice, all our deposit, our forty-five thousand dollars will be positive, last week it was seventy-five thousand, depends on, you know, how many electrons they send out of there at what price the marketplace is clearing at. This budget is nets that against our persons in the MISO marketplace, we don't actually physically own Perry State, it's through a take-to-pay contract via Majma, you know, Majma gathered up several of us. Well, MoPep would be a large core part of that, there are probably fifteen cities involved in Perry State here.
At least, at least five like us, like Columbia, Kirkwood, Colson.
There's definitely a couple of those and places like that. And then MoPep would be a big player in that, and so we, we're acting together, from Missouri, there's a dozen statewide-type joint action agencies that took part in Perry State.
Stevie, maybe referring to, we was, if we was self-managed when it first came online, it was ninety-dollar power at that time, and it would have been a good deal, but at the time it came online, we had a full requirements contract, if that helps any. So we were selling it to the open market.
I wonder what it's worth, if the back story of Perry State was, that plant was designed and commissioned in a time of much higher wholesale power prices than we have now, it's kind of like building an aircraft carrier to fight a war, and the carriers built long after the wars over. That's kind of what, Perry State, by the time it came on, online, operational wholesale prices had fallen, so the expected benefit of Perry State hasn't materialized yet. I think it's probably.
What's that?
If ever.
Yeah, in the foreseeable future. Where it was another field here, so we talked about how I build the revenue side of the budget, talking about how we build the expense side of the budget. Want to talk about the results of the budget, it was my last little line to cover under step one of our workshop here. Company-wide, the income is budgeted to be about two point three million dollars, down from fiscal year nineteen budget of three point nine million. These are, it's due to really two big variables here, higher purchase power costs driven by the lower FDR, AR, the lower transmission wise, which we was expected to receive, as well as interest expense on the, on the bonds to finance the GAC project. I estimated, just for rough round numbers, four percent on ten million dollars in bonds, so I hit water fund net income by about four hundred thousand dollars, for example. This created a company-wide cash contribution of negative point two million, negative two hundred thousand, down from a fiscal year nineteen budget of positive one point two million. Once again, this is due to lower net income as well as higher capital spending. And I wanted to point out, as far as results, none of the funds are meeting our current cash reserves policy requirement, that we increased cash reserves by five percent of revenue, so that's, just wanted to flag that or point that out. That's everything I have.
I think that would only be necessary if, if we hadn't met or were, and were close to, you know, that, that would be a mechanism for building, not for maintaining.
Yeah, well, the other, besides a ledger.
Is that where it came from to begin with?
Yes, it is.
Maybe we can adjust that policy to say, you know, five percent until you reach eighty or ninety percent of, and then, and then have the.
Yeah, that wording is.
Periodic update, so we have a target that's where we need to be, where we want to be there.
I don't think the cash reserves target, our policy has been revised probably since it was adopted, that's been about ten years ago.
Yeah, not at all, not, not the formulas or the sentence at the end or page it's referring to.
Yeah.
It's basically been as is since about two thousand nine.
Seems like a good opportunity to look at it again.
Was that Bob's brainchild then? Uh, yeah, basically, what he did was call up, looked up Columbia's cash reserve policy and just crossed out Columbia's handle and put it on another.
Gotcha, but copying is allowed and this business is cheaper.
Don't read about the wheel.
I mean, he looked at the others, but that was the one that followed what he hadn't seen in the past.
Well, it worked.
That's weird.
In a lot better place now.
We had no cash reserve policy before that, so.
A friend of mine is in the military, and he always used the term adjusted fire, he referred artillery, you shoot the first one, see where it lands, windage and everything else, and then keep adjusting, get closer. That policy has served us well for its first ten years, and it's definitely got us on more solid footing than we were before. Purchase power, actually, I already talked about quite, that's my second item, and feel free to.
So if I want to ask questions about specific accounts, wouldn't it be a good time to do that?
Right now is actually an excellent time.
Okay.
Because all I wanted to talk about was purchase power, which.
I'm, I just.
Yeah, I was wondering.
See what? I'm starting with the second page with the really small font, the first page has had the really small font, thank you, babe.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I was looking at this over the weekend, and my dad said, "Seven, I thought you had good eyes," and I showed him the sheet of paper and he's like.
Say I did, while I joined the DPO.
Yeah.
So this is a proposed budget compared to this year's budget, is what you're talking about, right?
Yes. I, I just highlighted major variances, just almost sheerly out of curiosity. So Department twelve, electric meter reading, twenty thousand dollar decrease, is that because of the?
Reduced the headcount there by one.
Okay. Is, is this new software system that we're installing for the meter reading, is that gonna further decrease that over time?
I, I don't know, Jer, do you have any thoughts on that?
Probably not that line item, that's mostly just print and labor for the meter reading department.
Not print, it, print is on a separate department down there, ninety, but it's just mostly labor for the meter readers.
Most of their expenses come out of the twenty-one. Most of their expenses come out of the twenty-one, forty-one, seventy-one, when they're purchasing metering software or whatever. Or a department bond.
Then electrical distribution saw a pretty significant hike. Jared?
That, that's purchase power.
Okay.
Related costs.
Okay.
Yeah, well, fifteen million, about seventeen million is purchase power.
Okay, oh wow, okay. And then, before I move on to water, can we just briefly talk about the distinction between residential, commercial, and industrial? And why it only applies to electric versus water and sewer?
For water and sewer, we had not differentiated between commercial and industrial.
Okay.
Electric's different because of the demand charge that kicks in, that industrial customers pay, they, in terms of kilowatt month, based on their peak, uh, their peak use that month. Just a kind of different set of terms, or a different set of economic drivers and building practices that have caused this difference shape between commercial, industrial, the large industrial and the electric, uh, bond.
Could you humor me and explain the difference between the three?
Between commercial and industrial?
Between residential, commercial, and industrial.
Industrial is anybody that sets a peak, about ratio, is it fifty kilowatts and you get a?
I'd say fifty or hundred.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Yeah. Sometimes I forget numbers, I don't look at them. Setting a peak demand of fifty kilowatts or more in a month. Puts you into industrial class. And then a much, much, much higher threshold puts you into large industrial. And it's for anybody, it's any customer, like a non, a non-occupied type structure.
There's a good definition of the rate schedule.
Which we're eloquent.
Which we'll see in June, but also on the website, under utility rates, there's a really good explanation of residential, commercial, industrial, basically has the requirements.
And that's on the website?
If you're looking for the utility pricing, you'll probably find it.
Then one more humor, what is the commercial distribution?
Commercial.
So industrial will be fifteen above, how do you get into the commercial?
Anyplace that's not, uh, not a occupied or residential structure.
Okay, so someplace that is tax certified as a business?
I'm not sure I'd say tax certified, cause if we.
Nobody lives there and you're below a certain demand.
Apes, cow grooming shop, I have one, would be a commercial structure, or a commercial customer. Somebody eat, like fifty KW.
Okay, thank you.
And then they're even within commercial, they're single phase, three days. Based upon how much, you know, domain you have.
My revenue model has many lines long, and this tries to bake them down to something that's more digestible.
Then in water, customer accounts has a pretty substantial uptick.
A lot of that's because I modeled in transfer fees and sales taxes on the, on the increased water rates. That's pretty much that entire, part of that's some wages too, we had a restructure in that department, we had a retirement in a supervisory level. We basically took that position, divided it three ways, myself and then two of the, two coordinators in that department.
And I'm assuming I will get a similar explanation when I ask about water distribution and debt service?
Water distribution would be an increase in headcount in that department stuff and a lot of that, was it two or one, one way or one? And also some increase.
I thought you said so.
Yeah, and then also increased street repair activity, my budget finally caught up, we had kind of a lull. And paying out invoices for street repairs after we do an excavation for a leak, this budget finally, we had some good trailing data to build. Those, those two items, headcount, increased repair activity. And the debt service stuff and the interest on the, basically the four hundred thousand dollars I was talking about, the four percent times ten million. Four percent might be a tad high, the bond market has changed quite a bit this last few days. I don't.
Our favor?
Yes.
Yeah, fantastic.
No news like good news, right? But for budgeting purposes, I just. Four percent times ten million.
Then moving over to sewer, there's a pretty substantial increase in commercial services.
Yes, our major, yep, our major industrial customer, our major, one of our major industrial customers added significant, uh, production. And this budget reflects that, when I built fiscal year nineteen budget, that production was only like one month in, we weren't sure how it was gonna shake out over a whole twelve month cycle. And this, how that we have that data, this budget reflects that.
That would be general, no supply, I'm assuming?
That'd be, yeah, yeah, I guess.
We have two, uh, trying, we have two surcharge rates in our schedule, the charge for BOD and suspended silence above a certain amount of pounds per month. And they exceed that, and now the suit exceed even more, so they didn't pay a little bit of surcharge for sending us high strength waste basically.
Says more to treat, to extra dirty stuff, more expense.
Wouldn't call it extra dirty, but high strength.
It's like a toll bill, you're driving a heavy truck on it, it's all that.
The, then moving further down in sewer. Pretty significant increase in sewer collection expense, and I'm assuming that probably has to do with treating the nastier stuff?
No, that's actually headcount drilling. That's gonna add department staff at a proper level, or at a, or efficient level. Treat the heavy stuff actually is department eighty-one stuff, but one point two, up from one million thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's adding, I think we budgeted at two bodies, we have five in the service here right now.
We dropped the seasonal help, I believe.
Yeah, we budgeted at two, am I saying that right, Matt? We budgeted at two bodies, that's worst case scenario. Kind of depends on how the stormwater proposition that goes, obviously if it doesn't go well, we might only land one. Cause a percentage of those guys will be used to do stormwater work.
So if it doesn't pass?
Yeah, we'll probably only hire one instead of two.
Then moving on to stormwater, there's not a lot of lines here, but.
Too few?
Yeah.
We're missing the revenue half of this.
I'm seeing that fringe benefits was halved.
Yep.
But that. To be redefine work responsibilities and move somebody out of stormwater?
We're trying to, in stormwater, also, we, a lot of that's just allocated administrative labor, we have an algorithm. Fifty percent of administrative wages in fringe hit electric fifty, twenty, twenty-ten, and ten percent lands in stormwater, just kind of getting the budget to catch up with how we're allocating out shared costs.
Okay. Just bear with me, guys, I have a lot of.
Ten more pages?
Yeah, I have a lot of highlights, but I'm not gonna ask all the questions.
So this is the electric, specific electric budget for these two more pages.
And I, and I wanna do my little white flight here, I have spreadsheet stuff for all this stuff, but I did not.
Okay.
On the overhead in case it gave him anybody motion sickness, I'd be happy to, if you guys would let me run my office, print anything off on you, cause I have a department, my department, all my notes and stuff.
So I'm seeing aerial lighting as a revenue. What is that?
That's a fixed monthly charge, eleven dollars a month, we charge to have a one hundred and seventy-five watt light at a property.
Okay.
Stay lit and save the light.
Yep, so we have street lighting, we have aerial lighting. So you have a street light in front of your house, but you want another light, you're more willing, welcome to have another light open and charge it for it. Oh, so those lights in my alley, somebody might actually be paying for those? They are. Oh, okay. That's what I was explaining to you.
Almost all lighting in alleys.
Two ladies fighting over somebody, one puts up a street light in the back, one lights it, and one doesn't, and they'll call and say, take down the street light, and, yeah, I've been in there. Okay. Yeah, that sounds fun for you.
This reflects that in about three hundred customers, just approximately, it's eleven dollars a month, so three thousand dollars a month.
And is that mostly alleys? Backyards and alleys. And then moving on, you know, transfer fee is obviously a revenue to us, but it doesn't stay with us.
It's also an expense, so if you look at, these should match up, so if you look at revenues, seven, GL account number four sixty-three, for example.
That's what I'm looking at.
Million two twenty-two. If you go to Department eleven, GL nine twenty-seven dot one zero.
Do you see that, Heath? Okay, I got it. That would match it up perfect.
And, and every month it should match up, if it doesn't, I've done something wrong.
All right.
So in, in total, and month by month, those two should net out. The auditors in our, like you don't see transfer fees in our financial statements, the auditors actually net those two against each other, sales taxes and transfer fees, cause they're past the.
And then miscellaneous service revenue is big enough for me to ask.
Yep, and miscellaneous is just. Around sixty-seven thousand dollars of that stuff in his, our annual pole attachment billing and charter. I built charter first of the calendar year for their pole attachments, fiber and cable attachments.
Okay. And administration fee income?
That's a slight discount we get when we pay our sales taxes promptly, it's a two percent discount. Sales taxes are only charged on commercial, commercial and industrial electricity and water, not on super CLC admin fee income and those two funds.
Okay. Then I'm seeing under expenses, bank finance and filing fees.
Yep, almost all that will be our interchange fees for accepting plastic cards, we accept around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month at debit credit card payments. And we pay a processing fee for that, about three thousand dollars a month.
And we don't charge that fee back, it's just billed.
No, we haven't, we've offered it, this is as a customer service, it, it, it's about one half of one percent of card revenue. So now we have, we have a cap on that, if, like, we don't let our biggest industrial customers pay by plastic cards, so.
It'd be racking up a lot of vacation miles.
A lot of airline miles.
And then, um, safety incentives.
That's. That's our yearly, Murmer actually requires us to have a monetary safety incentive award. And so basically that's our award, like, we usually just get a chamber of commerce, get you to get their apartment, or we just get, or something like that, if anybody didn't have a. Accident during the year.
Is that something that works? I mean, do, do you think people pay more attention because they?
Well, they're definitely upset when they don't get the award.
Okay, okay.
We used to get a day off, it used to be part, it used to be half a day or something like that.
Okay, then, um, under customer accounts, ah, oh no, I wrote never mind next to that one. So I'm seeing overhead lines, tree trimming.
A big one.
Is that, I mean, is there, is that literally all tree trimming, or is there, is there something else hidden in there?
Not much, part of that's grinding wood waste that the tree trimbers generate. So it's either cutting the trees or chopping it up.
Easement mowing in there as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, mowing of, of electrical essence.
Don't the city utilize that also? Probably share that with the city.
We do, the same, the same, uh, our disposal site accepts wood waste from all those in the city.
Yeah, we have a three, three-way service between us, Parks and Rec, and the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department houses the facility and maintains the site, and that's their contribution, we pay the fees. And the Parks and Rec mows, mows some grass that they didn't use to build before. That is ours.
Stephen, we discussed internally bringing that in-house, the tree trimming, because it's such a large line item, and we just can't. The equipment's expensive, the workers' comp would be expensive, it's, it's a dangerous, uh, labor-intensive activity that, it's about a cost break even, but it'd be a significant management responsibility to bring in-house, so we've continued to outsource that.
So. Liability to killing someone's tree, you know, it's amazing how much, how much a tree costs if you kill one. Yeah, I mean, tens of thousands of dollars.
It's a labor-intensive job too, and towns and that's a hard time keeping people, I don't imagine we would be in the same boat.
So.
I do remember when the board public works did their own.
So this four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, you know, we think we're already doing best practices on it in terms of liability, cost efficiency. Yeah, um, you know, that's, that's added to, if you look through the past ten years, it's kind of stepped up. But, um, the reason for that is, is more proactive tree trimming. That drives our nine 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 number, before, you know, the practice was, well, if the cutout doesn't open three or four times, then it doesn't need to be trimmed. Type situation, and then it all spirals down into safety of workers, all that, I could have walked you through some easements that. You would have loved to try to get wire up through the trees up in the air, so I kind of took a little bit more proactive approach. And it's a lot easier and more efficient when everything's trimmed well, um, to keep everything trimmed back than it was. To go in and fight it, and then we had to turn off the lines and, and go outages and stuff like that, our outage count for tree trimming now is, is way down. So what you're saying is preventative health is cheaper than triage?
It is, and that's prevention of the pound of cure.
It's expensive, it's expensive though.
It's a married stock chief.
A, a lot of that is more aggressive easement mowing too. Three or four years ago, we added to the elements of our mowing, stepped the street trimmer every five or six years, mowed every year, you know, for about.
Makes sense. And so then I'm moving on to the next page after that.
Can I stop you real fast, little?
Yeah.
While we're here on Department twenty-one, those six lines above, or right above tree trimming.
Yeah.
Cover purchase power.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys want to dig into that at all, but this is, of course, seasonally adjusted month by month, both the revenues of Prairie State, that's that negative number. When I said net things together, that's what I meant, was take revenues, offset them against expenses. And I tried to model in there the fall outage and spring outage, the different units of Prairie State, so you see a dip in November's revenues, if you see, if you flip over to the other page, you'd see one in the spring. Energy and transmission is, that's of course the MISO marketplace, our summertime peak blocks are factored into that. I take a six-year average of the actual megawatt hours brought to town to month by month, try to come up with that number. MISO transmission is the trailing twelve months, actual transmission charges we pay.
That includes that admin services, facilities charge in that, right?
That's actually in, uh, uh, energy and transmission, that five fifty-five is where, so, yeah, I did budget in the increased facilities charge, if you guys. Prairie State capacity is based on my trailing twelve month actual expenses there, that's what they'd even be the fixed costs of operating Prairie State, mostly debt service and also, um, fixed maintenance costs. I put a one percent inflation hazard on that, cause some of that is inflation, or so, so, subject to inflation. Prairie State energy is the cost to extract the coal and get it to the boiler, I put a two percent inflation factor on that, like, there's a lot more labor, like diesel fuel for the mine trucks and stuff like that. Generation capacity is actually by contract, so that involves nothing more than ten times twelve, a name of kilowatt. I just want, like I said a couple times, the purchase power being so big, I want you guys to kind of be familiarized with the process they do with that. Uh, go ahead, please.
Oh no, so, might as well I have highlighted, but I understand it, so I'll just ask again. Prairie State energy sales is shown as a negative number, just dumb that down.
It's, it's money we get. It's revenue. And, and before we started self-managing our portfolio, the way I presented that, the budget of that, was it, was actually a lineup here, if you noticed, GL five, four fifty-six, so it's set up, and the revenue side. Third line from the bottom, is, is where it's set in previous budgets. Since we went to the self-managed plan, it's analogous to the gasoline company that owns an oil well somewhere. Away from them, and so they're selling a well, not a oil well, they're also selling refined gasoline off their pump, it's kind of like, you know, netting their oil well revenue against their gasoline sales. Or gasoline purchases for their pump.
And so for us to net that out, we would take the Prairie State capacity and Prairie State energy and combine that with the Prairie State energy sales?
You would.
Okay.
Net be the net cost of works, revenue of Prairie State.
So net that's, you know, in the.
Six million dollars to the wrong side.
Okay.
Yep, rough, rough numbers.
Yeah. Moving on to the next page, I'm seeing non-cash, under non-cash and other expenses, we have uncollectible accounts. So, you know, we've talked to. So, okay, I'm making an assumption here, tell me what that is, uncollectible account.
Writing off customer receivables, if you don't pay, your bill hits this for one hundred dollars you owes.
Okay, so we, what's our, uh, we talk a lot about people not paying their bills, or at least we've talked about it before. But the overall uncollectible accounts is fairly.
It's really, really miniscule, it's, the customer service reps work that very, very hard. And we charge deposits to set, when people transfer new, or set up new service, transfer service, they have to pay their, any uncollectible account they might have. It's remarkable to me that we have, at any given time, we have a twenty percent leniency rate, but we have a two, or twenty basis point actual charge off rate, you know, it's just many, many orders of magnitude smaller.
Yeah, so, I mean, twenty basis points, so point two percentage, so just to put it in different numbers.
I might be carrying the decimal there wrong, it's a.
Yeah, no.
Fifty thousand on twenty-five million is a very small percentage.
Exactly, so my point is, we get our money.
One way or another, at some point in time, we typically get paid. One way or another, at some point in time, we typically get paid a certain amount.
Where that number gets bigger is when we have a commercial customer who goes bankrupt.
Yeah.
Holiday, actually, that's.
Okay. Because that, that would be the size of fifty residential customers.
Which can happen that number several years.
Yep.
Same with the hospital.
Yeah.
It'd be.
Hey, you say hey, right?
Oh, wow. Okay. Um, I am gonna move on to water now, and with each fund, some of these questions get fewer and fewer. Maybe because I'd asked them already, or because I lost stamina, so I was going to.
Your eyes.
His eyes probably lost stamina.
I apologize for the font and print. It's either printed like this or printed part landscape and part portrait.
Oh, it's okay, it's just easy to give you a hard time.
Well, I'm, I'm a big, easy target to poke at. I'm hard to miss.
So I'm seeing top-line interest income.
Yep, higher rates.
Okay.
Uh, this is just money on our, on say, our checking account. The water fund has its, uh, share of the pool reserves at F and M Bank, our banker director, and, and they're, they treat us very, very well at F and M. And also with, uh, we have an escrow account for the water fund, you know, say, five hundred and fifty thousand at one and a half percent, something like that. For the customer territory purchase from those can of water.
So we're making a little bit of money while our money's sitting there?
Yep.
That's great, that's not common.
Same, not, not common enough.
So then I'm gonna ask it again, is miscellaneous service revenue?
A few things like taps, uh, trying to think of the water fund, honestly, I just take.
Outside water meters.
What's that?
Outside water meters.
Oh, yeah. You can check my math stuff on transfer fees and sales taxes, but they should net out to each, to each other.
One interesting thing about the transfer fee is we adjust rates that, you know, because it's a percentage-based. City receives more transfer fees if we increase rates, or if we decrease, they receive less, so.
Right. That goes on the customer charge as well? No, the transfer fee is a separate line item on the bill.
No, it's a gross.
It applies to the customer charge as well.
Oh. Yeah, it's based on gross revenue.
Okay.
It's harder than the.
Okay.
We've covered all the debt stuff with joy. And then, uh, I do want to bring this up, interdepartmental billing. So, just to confirm, we charge our own departments when they use services from other.
Yeah, we, that's actually a separate ring on our rate schedule, is municipal, municipal interdepartmental, APW specific charges.
Okay.
So you'll see that in the water fund, purchasing electricity, and, and sewer fund, they purchase on water and electricity.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, if we could just get the electric fund to start purchasing some water.
Be nice. They drink water rate in that fund though.
You won't be able to fire us with that. Um, moving on to sewer, um, the penalties and interest income are the exact same amount? And I just thought that, I was curious, I'm asking if it was related somehow?
No.
Okay.
Happens to influence, I ran these off to like, you know, negative three on that Excel function.
Okay.
Based on, interest income, I actually have a worksheet on that, based on sewer funds. Sewer fund has a couple of CDs related to twenty thirteen bond issue, one's depreciation account, one's reserve account.
Okay.
Ten-year CDs at three point two percent, something like that, plus their share of our pool reserves, pool reserves at F and M. So, a couple million dollars at a half a percent, and then the penalties, just trailing twelve months around it all.
Okay.
Really coincidental.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I thought so, but I don't, I try not to believe in coincidences, at least when it comes to accounting, so I thought I would ask.
They are rare.
Yeah, and then, um, I think you answered it already, but the debt service is related to two thousand and thirteen bond issue?
And only to that, yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
And just as a reminder, what was that bond issue for?
Mostly to significant improvements in the wastewater treatment plant, I have to tell you.
That's a majority of some of the.
Britney Water Building, uh.
Yeah, redo all the electrical there in the building.
Yeah.
And some of, some of it's related to that downtown, uh, SSO project as well.
The plant's about as old as I am, so it was in bad need of some tune-ups.
Oh, and the previous, uh, water bond, uh, from twenty fifteen?
It's a direct.
Is there still? Is there still bond money that could be sold for that?
No, that was.
Because I thought it said a million, eleven million was sold, and it was twelve.
No, I believe we sold twelve point nine six, and, uh, net, net of fees, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the one that keeps, uh, every board meeting keeps saying, he's waiting to close it out, waiting on D and R somebody.
He got, then fifteen thousand dollars was spent, that was fifteen thousand thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, he always came in with a very, very penny on that one.
Um, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but that closes off my questions until we get to the capital project section.
If you guys ever have any other questions, feel free to pop an email or call, or, I have, Heath and I talked about what kind of presentation we wanted to have today. I just kind of thought, walking through at this level, probably most appropriate, there's spreadsheets and accounting software we could dig into if they were to.
Cool.
Thanks, Heath.
Yep.
Do you have any capital, capital project portion?
I'll turn it over to Heath for the capital projects discussion. This, this'll be the last two pages of your budget packet.
Yeah, maybe just page one thirty-one if you're on your iPad, or the last two pages of that out.
Yep. Want, want to point out, Heath, that those first projects that we call A, project numbers, those are administrative, are shared. Split funded fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, like with water and sewer. We have there the total dollar amount, and the heavy amounts reduced off the side in the original total cost.
And just remind us one more time, um, if this, uh, process passes, how will those administrative things be included?
Right now, I don't have Stormwater funding any of those.
Uh, yeah, but, um, and if process passes, you mentioned currently it's fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Oh, yeah. These current year ones, I'm not sure I would make.
That's probably more like, uh, we're splitting some labor and some administrative fees that way, but probably not capital projects until, until we actually start collecting revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, when I, when I mentioned Stormwater, I'm sharing some of the costs, it's, it's a very limited number of costs. For example, like scale of dispatch group, I don't assess.
Part of Matt's wages and a part of all wages, and injuries and other people.
And like the business office, I don't assess any of the CSR wages to Stormwater, because it's not a company, or when you assign a dispatch labor to Stormwater, because they're not really.
For, to use Heath as an example, do you have any idea how you would break up his?
It's the ten percent.
Yeah, it'd be fifty, twenty, twenty, ten.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's my, and like for I'm on insurance, I do that the same way. It's my best estimate at this given time.
Okay.
Because it, people's role's very day-to-day, like Heath's role, Matt's role, et cetera, et cetera.
Cool.
The GIS map, or, you know, just trying to establish them kind of.
Okay, cool.
If I'm, if I'm in the kind of breeze to play today.
That's what I was getting at.
On these capital projects, as I mentioned, off to the right-hand side of the last couple columns, second to last column, the column is the amount reduced. So basically, uh, we took the five-year plan, put it on here, you know, exact number for number. Um, and then once we did our, once we did our revenue and expenses budget, realized that we were gonna have a negative cash reserve contribution in each department. So we went through and re-prioritized accordingly. You can see the water, water projects got the most re-prioritization because having the highest deficit. And some of the things we had in there, we felt we needed to wait on. Didn't want to increase water rates anymore than we advertised, you know, to voters, so.
Water fund's going through its bleak, because you're losing that, this major customer at the same time interest expense kicks in on the GAC. And, and adding a headcount to operate that system, all laying in the same year is a challenge.
So, these, this top section of the administration, uh, projects, like Abe said, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. So the business park improvements, the third one down, a hundred and fifty grand. Um, what we plan on spending that money on, um, is, first of all, trying to buy the land on the northeast corner that we accessed the substation with. Um, we currently have a deal with, it's a hotel site, and they're talking about building a future hotel. And we have a ninety-day get-out-of-the-way contract for our gravel road entrance. So we're looking to divine the property between Sleep Inn and us, which I think we're all sewn. And, you know, build a gravel roadway or accessway there.
And we couldn't get to it from the side of the hospital, because of the creek that's there?
No, cannot get to it that way.
Or in the.
Yeah, I mean, you can get to it from the end, but you've really got to want to, and if it's wet, you're not taking a bucket truck in there.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I mean.
And this makes sense.
And part of the gator out there.
To get that road running on down there. Um, another possibility, uh, depending on, uh, priorities and what happens out there, is you remember, there was a drawing back there on that wall. Uh, it's kind of like a plot of the property, and it showed the concrete, showed a new access road on MN, just east of where the current apron is at. We can install that concrete apron if we need. Still do not recommend moving forward with the sewer relocation, or mitigation, or any of the late construction, anything that late for that would kind of just sit tight on. So that, that's why the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for that particular item.
But that right way, and a, and a road to that, to those transformers, you have to have that, whether or not the business park is there or not.
Yeah, we need access to our substation, yes.
You gotta get to, so.
Yeah, that's, that's our number one priority on that one. Uh, the one right below that, the, uh, facility improvements on the other side, we can re-prioritize that in half, from, I think it was four hundred to two hundred. And remember you approved a board meeting the two ago, the study with Cropper Murphy Tilly to, to basically give us a long-term roadmap on what we should do here at this, at this site. But they probably won't have that done until the summer, or till partway through our fiscal year. So what we've kind of tended on doing with that two hundred grand, unless the study tells us different, is installing some sort of payment kiosk here, somewhere on site. Maybe whatever the associated roadway improvements would be for that. I mean, right now, you enter that way, and you'd be paying with the kiosk on the passenger side, unless we put it out there, so. Some sort of re, uh, reconfiguring of how we enter and exit the site, that would probably be the majority of the cost. Also like to get some new signs that you can actually see. These signs have been here since, I don't know when, can't hardly see them all.
I didn't notice that till.
And, believe it or not, signage is very expensive. Bob had, uh, tried to get some when he first came here, and he stopped because of the expense. And then we like to get some carpet and flooring in the front office that would carry us through till, to our next, you know, upgrade, whatever that would be. And then we'll wait and see on the Cropper Murphy Tilly estimates for the rest of our improvements, and we'll put those into our five-year plan. I'm assuming they're gonna be much more expensive than, than we're gonna build it forward immediately, but at least we'll have a plan moving forward. Any other questions about the administration portion of this budget, you know, meter change out is. In the electric department, you can see we've got, we re-prioritized a couple of things, the biggie being the amount of substation rebuild. Put that in, split it over two fiscal years, set it down at one point five million dollars, hit it one year, or split it over two fiscal years as opposed to. Diesel generator controls is a new item since the five-year plan. We have four or five of those.
Five.
Five of those that are controls that are not, uh, not the newest, latest, greatest stuff.
We have three different control systems over ten units, if that could even, if you could just imagine trying to deal with that.
And keeping those things ready and available in MISO has been a challenge, trying to test them, it's something else. So, Jared's proposing over a few-year period to get a new software in each one, and it's like four, four hundred grand per one, so.
And that will administratively make it easier, I mean, not administr, labor-wise, it'll make it easier for you guys, because you're not gonna have to know three different systems, right?
That, and the, the system that we're, we're looking into getting is more of a cap proprietary system, and it's more reliable.
Okay.
Because if, you don't have to have a DOS computer.
Oh, a DOS?
Yeah, to be able to communicate to someone.
None of them have that.
You know?
Yeah.
Uh, we have one, two, but eight, eight, three. Three units that have, four units, sorry, four units that have it.
It's one of the unintended consequences of purpose and others. But we want to make sure we're available, so being reliable is a big part of that, otherwise we're not gonna be anywhere.
Well, and not only that, they are intended for emergencies, right? So I mean, being able to use them in an emergency would be a good thing.
Uh, any questions on the other electric projects in there, under electric distribution? Uh, underwater distribution, uh, the water lines and the lead service line replacement, those two go hand-in-hand. Uh, a good example is we did Marsh Avenue last summer, and we replaced, I don't know, thousand feet main, and all the services along there as well. All one, two metered, and those were, uh, either lead or galvanized, you know, just based on age. So we do those together, as we replace the water line, we replace the services as well. Almost, in every area where we have an old water line that needs to be replaced, the surfaces are similarly aged. So we cut those in half, um.
Is that?
Basically just built it forward.
I mean, Marsh was planned, was it?
Yeah, Marsh was planned.
It was planned, though.
Yeah, we did that in conjunction with the, the street department, uh, doing their overlay project, and they built it all to get the replacement available. So it was a relatively cheap industry repair. Also, it looks like with our current warranty, that's about, somewhere between about a hundred and two hundred thousand. It's about how much we can actually spend without hiring somebody else anymore, without contracting it out.
So a quick question, if we were to, at our current rate, how long would it take us to replace all the lead service lines in town? I mean, and then that's, of course, assuming you know how many there are.
Fifty years or longer?
Whatever to that. When we looked at our potential services that have to be upgraded, here are almost two-thirds of the community.
Okay. And to translate that again, so in order to do it faster, it would be a lot more expensive?
Yeah, we replace some water lines and services, we should probably be at more like a million dollars a year, uh, in this, in this line item.
Wow.
And we're trying, we get to two hundred thousand, and sometimes have difficulty with that. And these two big capital projects and water, water, and they get all that impossible to do that in the next twenty years.
Yeah, we're damn strong for a long time, twenty, twenty fifteen, now twenty, twenty nineteen, on initiatives. So, because those debt service payments are probably that million dollars a year combined, the two of them.
So, in other words.
Ten million would have gone a long way.
The GAC for certain water?
Yep. Waterline replacement.
And that's a pretty, that's a real million-dollar year, it's pretty concerning, we have a hundred and fifty miles of pipe, that would be.
This is why we want to write something up and give it to our congressman, so that we can get that kind of money, because we're not gonna get that from water.
Right, because if we're not gonna get it from our, our budget.
Right, sure.
And, uh, one more question, at a million bucks a year, how long would that take? Still probably ten or twenty years?
We got a hundred and fifty miles of pipe, and you can make the assumption that pipe has solved roughly in my last fifty years. So a million bucks a year, uh.
How much is it roughly, a, a dollar a mile, or a dollar a mile per mile?
It cost us about a million bucks to do a mile. We did it in downtown here, so I'll be kind of weight concern.
Ooh, Jesus.
Just, Main Street was almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So just a perpetual.
And that wasn't street repair.
Perpetual.
Recycle.
Yeah. Depends what kind of, build that, has had to run that many different apartments, like movie theaters or others.
So that's, that's a hundred and fifty million dollar of pipe, and that's just kind of.
When we sat down here, six, nine months ago, we came up with a, with a two hundred million total, water and sewer, rough number, infrastructure needs. A hundred hundred million dollars each one.
We're not the only one.
Oh, yeah, no, I.
Every city has the Appalachian line.
What was it, to bring up the pressure on the GAC projects?
Pushed our priority back on that, pushed our.
Just to make.
Possibility to be much there. Other things reduced, of course, you can see in the water distribution department, we took out a, you know, new vehicle, that's a forty thousand dollar convert future year. We were gonna do some, uh, we were gonna make the storage side for some pipe, um, whether it's water or sewer pipe, that's gonna come in for the water tower. Get some of the, the water away from here, and that, we re-prioritized. the water away from here and that, we re-prioritize that as well. The water treatment, uh, area, of course, the ten day is, is what that is, we got borrow financing for that, so it doesn't actually hit.
Yeah, it shows up as an item, this project we're doing, and, and this whole document starts with, is a communication tool to City Hall, you know. But then to show our actual cash in, in the checking account, I, I show financing offsetting up.
Unfortunately, about everything George had planned up there, had the water plan for improvements, it's kinda pared back a little bit altogether there, so we, his equipment upgrades, cut that from fifty to twenty-five, so you just have some money, you know, he's got heaters and stuff, he knows that, and he's certain place, he can, he can do so. Any questions about the water?
Yeah, just, what are the energy efficiency upgrades?
We have a lot of, uh, uh, heaters, uh, electric heaters hanging up that are running sixty to maybe eighty percent efficient. Uh, looking at replacing a lot of that, uh, any pumps that we could replace, that would be more efficient, um, to, really to cut down on the, uh, interdepartmental billing dollar amount that you see.
Okay, and you've been doing some lighting?
Yeah, we, we, we've actually switched everything from, uh, uh, normal lighting to LED already.
Cool, is that probably what this reduction does, is probably doesn't allow some of the heating, heating upgrades that he was gonna do. It's all resistance blower heater, so. And it's similar to waste water plant?
Yes, sir.
Um, sewer collection department, we lowered the, uh, downtown overflow elimination project and some of the sign-eye corrections stuff that Matt was doing. Makes we can still get what we can get done, um, with the amount that is in there. And also deferred a, a vehicle to forty thousand dollar. And then up at the sewer treatment plant, we deferred, uh.
Uh, real quick, what, what's that camera van?
It's what we do, our CCTVing of our sewer mains with.
Oh, okay.
Stable on the trailer.
The trailer we got was purchased back in mid-two thousands.
Okay.
Most of that equipment's obsolete at this point, and the trailer's about, about shot, so.
It makes sense.
Skids, do, can I replace that, or is that new?
We're renting one right now, so that would be a new, or purchase, we'll, please rent one from, uh, whoever now to do his main hole raising. Uh, other departments have a need, uh, where they could use that.
Yeah.
From time to time, we'll also have one, it'd be nice.
Charge that, absorb that rent.
Exactly, give back some of that interdepartmental milling.
A fair, a fair negative rent base off our schedule.
The, uh.
Thanks, Ed.
At the, at the sewer plant, at the waste water plant, um, the only thing we deferred is the, our own back truck dump station improvements, and George had some ideas there, try to keep solids out of there. The, i- if we're lucky and the RV dump station comes in lower, you know, maybe we'll be able to do something at our own, at our own dump station site, but, right now we have that at a seventy-five thousand dollar price, so.
When I first asked, you thought like ten or fifteen thousand bucks?
We could do a cookie, that's what happens when you ask these two. We could do something cheap and easy, but to do it long-term, permanent, that's what we're talking about.
I've installed one of these before and going cheap costs you a lot in maintenance.
And you have the opportunity to patch it online, uh, to have an electronic, um, card or whatever, and somebody can scan the car and then you know it's, you know, stepping down three thousand.
Oh, well, that seems equitable.
This day and time, you can use it for billing.
Okay.
They can also do like a sample for you.
Okay.
Not saying we'll get to all that just yet, but, and our sites are kinda limited down there by the waste water plant, they wanna stay out of the high rip, out of, out of the hot water.
Yeah.
And as well as building monitor, so.
So, next time Mr. Cole asks me when we're gonna get the poop office property, um.
Yeah, July one is the earliest we would start that.
Okay.
Project, assuming it's approved by the board.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm sorry to dump this on you, I mean, pun intended, um, but I, uh, I'm, I mean, for the property owner's sake, I'm glad we can fix a pass wrong.
And you'll see in the stormwater, uh, department, we took out any capital projects. And even if process passes, uh, we weren't expecting any revenue till twenty twenty. In the stormwater department, minus if you call revenue borrowing from the electric department, minus, minus that half.
I don't call that revenue.
Is the GPS equipment, um, in stormwater, is that for the, um, street cleaners?
Um.
No.
No.
That's, that was just the collection equipment, that's all it was.
Any, uh, questions about those projects?
That very last page here shows the total dollars that we reduced each fund by. Keith and I kinda had the, uh, opinion or goal of bringing you guys a direct budget that did show a positive, or at least break even cash contribution in each fund, but, when we started this process, electric was to the negative four hundred and ten thousand, water similar. But it was, all, it was all we could do with water to get it back up to showing a five thousand dollar positive cash contribution.
So, to, to reframe that, you know, our, our bottom line budget looks pretty bleak as it is, and in order to get there, you had to defer a lot of things that we collectively decided are good to do.
You know, it's a challenging year and, of course, water fund, losing major customer and interest expense kicking in. Electric funds, heavy capital year, we're doing a once every fifteen year whole city meter change out, our electrics picking up a lot of the tab on. You know, one, twenty-five, twenty-five allocation, at the same time, we're experiencing some higher purchase power costs. Uh, some part of the market cycle there that we're learning. And so, those two things combined, uh, hit that fund for, you know, million or so, you know, just phone numbers off the top, they have a million eight. And those two variables, and so we, um, that's why we took some steps that he went through. You know, mil- electric alone shows a million dollars of capital either reduced or deferred, to, to get to its current positive cash contribution. You know, we could have easily showed that, a, half a million to the negative.
And that positive cash contribution is still within the variance of, you know, how your budgets usually fall, right?
Yeah, it'd be within what, one, one point five percent.
Yeah.
Cause you're, in, in rough numbers, you're talking four hundred thousand on twenty-seven million.
Yeah, so we're, we're tight.
Yeah, in water, we're basically budgeting it flat.
Yeah, water's basically a break-even, and electric, th- tho- though a positive cash contribution of four hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred sounds like a lot, in terms of a twenty-seven point five million dollar budget, it's not a lot.
It's one point, one point five percent.
It's one day of revenue.
So, I mean, it.
Of, of the ISO market.
It's a half a month of per state, it's gonna weaken ISO.
So, it wouldn't even require a large swing, it might just require a somewhat normal market blip for us to have to pull into our reserves just to operate at some point.
It'd require a virtually imperceptible swing, you know, one point five percent fewer kilowatt hour sales, for example, or something. Feel like if a family earned thirty thousand dollars a year, this would be a three hundred dollar swing in their annual budget.
So, yeah.
Or four hundred fifty dollar swing in their annual budget.
Yeah.
You know, that's one week at Walmart for me.
Or a speeding ticket for me.
Yeah, he'd drive faster than I do, my stick wasn't that long.
I like to push the previous management, I like to feel it rattle and call.
Humiliate other drivers being passed by a previous.
Yeah, there we go.
So, if there's no questions on the capital stuff or the rest, the rest of the budget, we can move on.
That covers everything up to the point of, uh, rate direction discussion, uh, covers how the budget gets billed, revenue side, expense side, capital allocations and reportizations we made, purchase power meant. I emailed out to everybody here, some, my thoughts, and some thoughts I kinda run by senior management here, some reasons to cut, we should be considering a, a, an electric rate cut, some reasons not to, um, I'm sure you guys probably looked at that already. The reasons to are pretty straightforward, uh, cash reserves, electric fund are about twenty-five percent above the current policy target. As we discussed earlier, it's a policy target, it's about ten years old, um, I reached out to our, our rate study consultants, Utility Financial Solutions, and they have a generic algorithm, they could, for a fee, develop a customized, uh, formula for us, but their generic range, the midpoint of their generic formula would have us at about five percent higher than we are right now. So, though we're twenty-five percent over our current policy, I, I don't wanna characterize that as being way out and significantly overfunded.
But we're above the low end of the range.
We are above the low end, yeah, above the low end, below the midpoint.
Right.
Um, if you factor in some of those capital projects that we're considering, and electric fund that appear at least fifty percent likely to occur, that the low point becomes our current point. We'd be at the low point at that point. That's too, too many points on point. Uh, so, of course, the reasons to cut rate, our reserves are over target and it's goodwill of the public, uh, rate cuts are popular. Uh, reasons to not cut rate, to not cut rates, this comes to the one point five percent, uh, budget per electric fund, uh, though it's showing a positive cash contribution, it's only a one point five percent of revenue. It would not take many negative, uh, very, or unfavorable variances there to throw us into a negative cash contribution position for next fiscal year. Cash reserves target, I kinda talked about, our target has not been revised for ten years. Utility financial has the low at nine million, the high is sixteen million, and this formula includes operating expenses, debt coverage, all that stuff, capital spending. Their midpoint is about twelve point five million, so about four or five percent higher than we are right now. If we factored in some of those key, those capital projects, we've been discussing, the range shifts to twelve to nineteen million.
We're barely on that scale.
Yeah, we're just at the low end of that.
We're on it, man.
It's like being the dumbest kid in medical school, right?
About where you were, you know?
Yeah.
Hey, John McCain graduated last from the Maybach.
Did we put anything in this year?
We're budgeting to put in about a million cash contribution.
Okay.
And I wanna point out that for the fee of nine thousand dollars, Utility Financial Solutions could be hired to determine a customized cash reserve formula for each of our funds.
That's not a lot of money, but on the other hand, we have a range to work with, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it'd be money well spent, because these, this company is a national expert for both APPA, the, the electricity market, AWWA, the, the water side. They, they know our business and our industry, they did the cost of service study for electric and for water, um, I think it'd be a reasonable investment to make, because we're trying to manage nineteen total, dish, million dollars of cash reserves in any given time.
That would, that'd make me feel good, just because our reserve policy is two things, one, ten years old, and two was kinda, yeah, just drawn out of thin air. It, it need to have a specific.
Not out of thin air, plus, it doesn't change, I mean, what are we gonna put into it? You gonna raise, you gonna raise electric rates to put more in?
It wasn't drawn specifically for us, it was happy, I'd like to have one of those drawn specifically for us.
You, you could get a little more, uh, specific with some of the details, I know when we first developed that cash reserve policy, I thought they were targets or goals that frankly, I didn't think we'd ever meet. But they were just, it was always gonna be out there.
Right.
Well, in the electric department, we, you know, we, we met the, what I thought was unattainable. Maybe we need to redefine some of those terms and maybe, maybe there's a minimum cash reserve level, and maybe there's a maximum cash reserve level. I know in the self-funded insurance fund, we have a maximum cash reserve level.
Yeah.
And when we get to the maximum amount, you, you do something, you know, to stop making less mon- stop making that much money. Um, if you have a minimum amount, same thing.
I mean, if we find out we need to have, pay somebody nine thousand dollars and find out we need to have fourteen million dollars. Based on us capital stuff, you know, we're, obviously, we won't be doing it with this fiscal year. But, you know, looking down the road and then seeing where we're at with the rates and how we compare with other cities in, in Missouri, I mean, you know, we may or may not be able to go there anyway, so, I, I guess knowing, you know, having a, having a target that was set by, by an expert isn't a bad thing, but it doesn't make it any easier to get to it. No, it's, you'd have a map before you leave the house, you know.
Then, then where, where do you go with it? Say, say the minimum is fifteen thousand, the maximum's twenty, whatever that number is. So, you hit the twenty, you reduce rates, three years later, you hit the minimum of fifteen, do you raise rates again? And then, say, five years down the road, you hit the twenty, do you reduce rates?
I think a five or ten-year plan is, you know, it doesn't hurt, I mean, that's how you got to where we're at now.
It's a ten-year.
But it's, but we're still in, we're still in adding mode, and, and it was my request that we consider, you know, looking hard at this at a time when we're raising rates in other utilities, because I can tell you for a fact that, you know, when you get, uh, three and a half percent increase or a seven percent increase in one of the three utilities you're being billed for, seem to be four maybe.
Sure.
Uh, you really don't notice that the electric didn't go up, you notice that your bill went up. So, when we talk about rates stability, uh, the customer, of which I am one, just sees the, the bottom line. They don't see utility by utility and said, oh, well, you know, at least electric rates didn't go up, or they only went up one percent and water went up seven, you know, so.
Sure, that's understandable.
That's all I ask, and I think, you know, you've made enough of a point, uh, with what you showed me that, uh, and with the budget and the cuts that were made to get where we're at, but, you know, I'm not gonna push hard to, to cut the electric rate at this point in time, in order to try to soften this blow, I mean.
Everybody here, and, you know, we all want to get stewards of the repairs, funds obviously, of which these reserves are, are part of that. I just wanted to have the logical discussion of that the reserves are kinda like the, uh, back of the fortress or the wall around our castle here. In bad time, if bad ti- bad times happen, major storm event, we definitely don't wanna be raising rates, a lot of people are already suffering to rebuild their own lives, at the same time, we're trying to rebuild ours. I would like to, you know, consider spending nine thousand dollars, get a customized rate formula, uh, I wonder if I have the topic of capital projects, um, two ways to pay for capital, one's cash, the other one's debt, you know, reserves would allow us to either RLS or pay cash entirely. Our lenders are gonna require certain debt service rate coverage ratios, like Ms. Howard talked about. If we cut rates one year, borrow, you know, raise them a couple of years later, based on borrowing, it kinda sends a schizophrenic message to a couple of customers, and they think we don't know how to run our business here. Stormwater, as we talked about a lot, continues to be a contingency out there, we don't know how that's gonna be funded, it's gonna definitely require more cash in the short run of some, some sort. And, of course, the whole GAC project appears to be going well, it's early.
And I'm, I'm figuring, you know, I mean, that's one of the big things in my mind to keep track of is that, you know, we, if we have to borrow from that in the short term.
Yeah.
That and stormwater, which we've already had. It would be nice to, it would be nice to all the reinvest, the healthy cash reserves, the electric profit and the electric funds, some of these projects we're talking about.
Right. And in a lot of other cities, they don't even have that choice, because the utilities are separate and each have their own separate boards.
With that bar, if possible, keep minimizing bar.
Yeah, I did prepare, I sent you guys kind of a ten, uh, eight-year history of electric grades, I thought it was kinda interesting, the, uh, total average residential customer bill. There is no such thing as average, no commercial or industrial, you know, it's companies just all over the, all over the map, but as far as residential, about nine hundred kilowatt hours a month, you know, my family uses, that's a lot more than that, but, uh, our average household's about nine hundred, including customer charge and everything else. The average residency, about a nine percent increase in their average bill in the last eight years, annualized change around one percent.
Now, that didn't include the time, with the thirty-five percent.
Starts right after that, yeah, it includes the times this first name went live and build any ca- the cash reserves we've been talking about. You know, two major things, um, foresee repeating themselves, and, uh. So, I, I think, regardless of what hap- I think we see a future, at least a foreseeable future, of, uh, stable rates for all customer classes. I had prepared some rate cut options, you know, or let some rate cuts be applied, um, because of the correction I, I was given. So, we, kind of, in dollar terms, what a two percent essential rate cut would, would be, and then also redefine large industrial class. I, I think an issue with fairness, like I'm a incentive, we should be considering that, um, obviously for you guys to decide.
Yeah.
I thought that was a good idea. It wasn't my idea, but I think it is a good idea, so. I don't wanna collect, take any credit for it all, I just.
One of the issues we've run into with that large industrial, uh, rate class is it only includes one customer. And obviously, the other customers can figure that out pretty quick. And having a rate class that only includes one customer is not ideal, I'd rather it include group of customers. And we, we were kinda reactionary with that large industrial rate class creation, and probably should have looked at a different threshold, uh, where we put that, so. If, if you lower from four thousand kilowatt hours, or four thousand kilowatts to one thousand, or four mags to one mags, it includes about four or five customers instead of one. Would have been at least one more if they would have moved out now.
All right, Corey, do you wanna add anything to this, cause this kinda falls under. Hey, Corey, do you want to add anything to this, cause this kind of falls under your umbrella?
Sure, so, I mean, obviously it's a thing about, you know, being competitive rate. Um, I think you've seen some examples recently with some of our larger employers where we haven't been competitive for expansion opportunities with other communities that they reside in. So, obviously that's important, not just with those who are trying to attract to the area, but also those who are already here. I think they bring some other benefits to us in terms of your ability to be able to buy power, um, in terms of the base load that they provide, and so obviously to extend, another one like we had across the street goes in a different direction. Obviously that makes things more costly for all the other ratepayers. So, I think there's some, obviously there's benefit certainly, aside from job creation, property tax, first property tax dollars that come from those things, but there's, I believe, benefit to all ratepayers in that as well. So, I think, you know, obviously my goal would be to see us be in a more competitive scenario the next time we have opportunities to look at some of the expansion opportunities. I think that sometimes things, people don't think about an economic development, they always think about business attraction, we don't think necessarily about the expansion opportunities or quite frankly, the job preservation opportunities. When we see companies contracting, they're typically looking at facilities in multiple areas, and so they're trying to decide where their most efficient facilities are so they can contract into those. So, obviously we want us to be as competitive as possible, particularly given the conversation you had earlier about rate changes that are occurring in other utilities as well. I can tell you, I know Keith and the staff here have had similar conversations to what I've had, we've had obviously some, I wouldn't say difficult conversations, intense conversations over the last month and a half or so with some of our larger employers about where we're heading with some of these territory rates. So, I'll just throw that in the mix for your thought process.
Now, we do have the incentive rate for electric, you know, already in place, so I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yes.
And, uh, do you think that would, it, I mean, that can't hurt, but
No.
it is sort of a short-term thing in terms of a, of a new customer, I mean, would it be better to, to make an adjustment like we're talking about on a rate and then not have that, that, the incentive?
It's a good question, um, you know, the nice thing about the incentive is not every community's in a position to be able to do that. You know, if they're served by, you know, Ameren, KCPN, or others, I mean, they don't have the opportunity to do that, as you know. So, it is a competitive advantage for us, um, to be able to offer those types of things, we're competing for investment that's looking in other communities. You know, I guess the question would be, you know, how often we use that? I've seen it offered, you know, right, I mean, that's what we typically see, I think you guys know Ameren and, uh, KCPN and others have what they call economic development writers. You know, they'll come into the project meetings and offer those, it's very rare, quite frankly, on Ameren's side, anyway, to see anyone actually qualify for that. I think one that I'm aware of, uh, KCPN is a little bit different because theirs is tiered, so they do see more companies qualify. So, I, I do believe that's an advantage that we have that others don't. However, in terms of, you know, longevity and goodwill with our existing employers, I think, um, if I had to choose between the two, I would, I would go in one direction of, uh, you know, expanding the large user rate to accommodate what we have here today.
Business retention titles.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, we haven't done a very good job of advertising that incentive rate.
Yeah, I.
Started doing that.
Yeah, and I do want to add.
Every time, every time we go on the door of these places, we say.
And I do want to add to that too, I mean, some of the conversations I've had more recently, I mean, I have taken responsibility from our organization's perspective of some of the information that hadn't been shared. I mean, quite frankly, our job is to be doing what we've been doing over the last two months and spending time with our employers in the area, talking with them about a multitude of things, but also these advantages that are available to them. Quite frankly, when there are times when they're not happy, whatever that might be, uh, you know, when literally he was listening, as soon as I get to the EDC mobile, I place a phone call to him to see if we can either chat or set up a meeting because I think that's part of my responsibility, not just for the board of public works, but our other partners as well, to provide you with feedback as I receive it. So, I think we'll know earlier on in conversations now when there are people who are dissatisfied or frustrated or don't understand. And I, I hope anyway, we'll have a, because of a better relationship, we'll have a better opportunity to have conversations with them early on. And hopefully see some more trust there than maybe what we've seen in the past. And I've sort of fallen on the sword from our organization's perspective, you know, it's not just Kerry's job, it's not just board of corporate's job, it's our job, and he didn't do it.
Very good, I'm personally grateful that you're out there.
Thank you.
Doing it and creating new relationships and cementing existing ones.
Thank you.
So, this option that you gave to us, I mean, are you rec, are you recommending that we not do that?
I would recommend that we do redefine large industrial class from a peak of four million to one gigawatt. That, that's the only option I recommend at this time, um, in the future, consider cutting other rates by, by not the residential. No, no other rates besides that. Large industrial isn't such a rate cut, it's just a rededuction of that class and, and I think that's probably the consensus we have of management here. I might just put that other two percent cut in there just to quantify and show what it would look like, show what cash contribution would be as a result of that. I would sure like to do that, but I'd like to get that asked, some of these, all these other variables to be discussed.
Yeah. I, I really, I mean, I really don't like changing the large industrial threshold within the context of the budget that we just saw, but I think it's kind of correcting a past wrong or a past oversight.
That it was four years ago.
Yeah, that makes it, it compels me to think that it's a good idea, even in light of other things.
It's never the wrong company to do the right thing.
Yep.
Say there's five or six industries.
I think there would be four and four would have been, would have been at least one of the customers that moved out of town.
Probably both, probably one and.
Would have been as well. So, any, any of these facilities are out here have the opportunity.
I, I don't think it would have saved them leaving, but.
It's never one.
No, probably not.
Yeah. Better than not lose, you know, best offense is to defense, kind of play. I don't, I don't listen to sports, I mean, they're not gonna leave for the fourth of this number. For sure, so. No, probably not, it's, it's always a scorecard of variables, and if you pass enough, then you get, move on to the next grade. But no, my recommendation would be to redefine the cup, the, that rate class and, and make no other changes to electric, and as an upcoming.
And the way you have, uh, preliminary, you know, back to the first or second page of the budget, you show it without that in there.
That's correct, there's no rate changes baked into that.
So, the four hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred cash contribution would go down.
Two sixty, or two sixty-three, something like that. Matt, my head's all tricked.
Yeah.
It's essentially break, break even cash contribution, electric is what it really is.
Takes it down to about half a percent.
Steve, you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
There's been action requests at this time.
Yeah, you know, I.
Uh, right, I mean, I'm just saying for, for next month, or whenever we get the final verdict, you know, put that in, I guess.
Yeah, so at, at the April meeting, I will give you a budget for, for your approval that will reflect, redefine that rate class and make no other changes unless I.
And. Well, we'll get through another year and get the construction done and then see where we're at. Constantly look at, at possibility.
If there's questions or, uh, just recommendations between now and April meeting, that, that's no issue at all. Technically, if you're not, uh, ready to move forward in April, you can approve it in the meeting, we're still, we're still in line with the city schedule, that kind of stuff. We typically approve in the April meeting, but if there's something you're not exactly comfortable with, or you can approve it with one modification, you know what I mean? You can say, I think, make the motion, approve this based upon.
Pending law provision.
Well, I don't necessarily want to go through this too many times. So.
It is fascinating.
It's very important.
April.
My roller coaster.
We'll have.
So, you know, I'm trusting that.
In the April meeting, we'll have all the regular reports and the budget stuff up near the beginning of the meeting. Uh, then Joyce, stuff on the bomb kind of towards the end if, if we can somehow.
Hopefully we.
Is that day.
Yeah, it will need to be done by about five thirty or so, where James and other people can move on to the city, city meeting.
Yeah, just to clarify, so we don't send the Dave next messages here, um, are we okay with spending the money on the reserve policy thing? I, I am, I don't know about Lenny and Phil, so I just.
Uh, I'm okay. Should we add to it or is it just a brutal correction? It's a nine thousand dollar right.
Yeah, it's fine, just.
Like I'm receiving that.
Go ahead and.
It'd be nice to know which either, or neither of those large capital projects in electric are gonna happen, is it, it's gonna definitely play out in the calculation reserves. I can have them calculated either way, I guess.
And hopefully they don't, I'd like to have a, a consistent cash reserve policy across all funds and not have weird form of electric water and electric be totally down too. Like it'd be easy to understand and remember.
Good luck on that.
They're very different businesses, so. If you guys have any questions on this, please don't, these are lot numbers pulled together, I have formulas linked to things, if I could have the title in here or something. If you catch it, I would not be offended if you told me, I'd be, I'd be happy if you did. Any questions, just give me a call.
If you make the thought bigger, next time I might catch one.
Those are the, these little fingers on your tablet are for you.
Yeah. You get all the way down there and you can't see where you left, that's okay.
Yep, I want to thank Keith and Matt, all the department supervisors that, you know, that does it, it's a team effort, it's them doing their business. You know, I'm just kind of the, uh, scribe of the whole process.
Yeah, it's a solid, solid couple of weeks of work.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to the next item, which I see as adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say, who's in favor?